Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of May 19, 2014. If you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would like to quickly read the Roll, please.
Councilmember Schwab.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Althoff.
Here.
And Mayor Hedges.
Here. Right on. That's good. All right. Approval of the Agenda is next, and I'd like to add a item to 77E, an airport report. Mark will share with us about that. So we can then do the Agenda.
I'll move for approval of the Agenda as amended.
I'll second.
And move to second to approve the Agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of our previous meetings, and there was a regular council meeting on May 5. Any additions or corrections?
Just one correction. Page three, under D, just my name is over on.
Oh, thanks. How's that happen?
Just in one spot. Must be a typo.
I'll move for approval as amended.
I'll second that.
And move to second to approve the minutes as amended for the May 5 meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Close. Then also in our packet is the work session of May the 13th. Any additions or corrections there?
I move that we approve the minutes of the work session.
I will second.
And move to second to approve the work session minutes of May 13. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? Approval of the accounts payable, item four. Again, for review.
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
I'll second.
And move to second to approve the accounts payable as presented to us. And a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. And I have citizen comments, so it's number five for any of the items that do not appear on the Agenda. If you'd like to address the Council, this would be a time to do that. As I said, step to the podium and state your name.
My name is Dave Thompson. I live in Virginstown Township. And I'm here to bring you up to date on the committee activities in the cemetery, specifically at Memorial Day, one week from today. Little did I know, some months ago, when you agreed to allow the American Legion to move ahead with that project, that it would not be just the smoothest running thing ever. However, I'm here tonight to say that everything is in place. That was not true last Friday. But everything is in place, and the last sticky item was the cannons arrival. And the cannon will be in Lowell on Thursday, this Thursday, at 5:00 PM to be lifted into place on the Cannon Mount. Any of you who would love to come and watch that operation are certainly invited to be with us at 5:00. We have a number of things that are going to be happening as part of Memorial Day, added to our typical Agenda. We will have, incidentally, as of today's date, 27 veterans who, since last Memorial Day, have passed on and will be recognized as part of that ceremony. Also with us on that sunny morning will be, that's the only catch that's still left unresolved, is the weather, but we're hopeful for a good day. We also have with us a group from Sunfield, big city of Sunfield, down south and east of us a little bit. It's a group called the Sunfield Curtinius Guard Camp, Sons of the Union Civil War. And they will take part. You recognize them immediately. They will be in Civil War uniforms, blue uniforms, as I would point out, as a part of our ceremony. The media has been well notified, and I think, expecting a beautiful day, we should have an excellent turnout. And I want to invite you to take part in both the parade, which some of you have done on a regular basis, marching with representatives from both Lowell and Virginstown Township. And to take part in the ceremony itself, at least one of you taking part in the ceremony at the cemetery. If you have questions, if you have a copy of the press release in front of you, if you have questions about any of that, feel free to call me anytime between now and about 7:30 Monday morning. I will take your calls after 7:30. I want to thank the City for being willing to help us with our campaign to raise the money that we needed. We're still a little short, but as I said earlier, the Legion will stand behind that, hopefully being able to collect the remaining balance as the year goes on. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Dave, and thank you for all of your work and this effort. We're all looking forward to it. Anyone else here to address the Council for items found on the Agenda? Seeing none, then we'll move on to all business, and item six, our strategic goals report.
Thank you. Mayor and Councilmembers, just one item to report on, the code compliance processing reporting. Police Department has been working with residents and businesses on compliance and house numbering. And also, we've notified property owners along the river about the environmental impact of dumping yard waste into the river or on riverbanks. Not only the environmental impact, but the potential impact on their wallets in terms of DEQ fines or criminal offenses. So that's all I have to update you with.
All right. Thank you. Moving on then to new business. I'm selling an amendment to the lease agreement between the City and Lowell Energy AD.
Thank you. Greg Northrup with Lead is here, and Greg Pierce is here as well with Lowell Light and Power to answer any questions that you have. But this is really pretty simple and straightforward. What it comes down to is the footprint for the valve adjuster project is smaller than what was originally anticipated. And so Lowell Energy AD is interested in leasing a little bit less space than what was in the original lease agreement. This lease agreement has been reviewed and recommended by the Lowell Light and Power Board, and that was being brought to you as Amendment One. Similar to the process before, they'll actually have two resolutions, one that you have reviewed tonight, and if you approve the resolution tonight, then they'll have to sit with the county clerk for, or I'm sorry, the city clerk. I don't make that slip very well. With the city clerk for 20 days before it can come to you again, so that it will come to you again in the form of another resolution. As I said, the footprint is a little bit smaller. There's Exhibit C regarding work that Light and Power will need to do as a part of the lease agreement. Some of the cost estimates in those within certain elements have changed. The overall dollar amount at the bottom has not changed, but because we're close to the project, they were able to refine some of those estimates, and so a few of those things have changed a little bit. Again, as I said, the overall dollar amount has not changed. And that's pretty much it. I don't know, Mr. Northrup, if you had anything you wanted to add, or just answer questions.
Greg, any questions on the Council part?
On the part for the, this is for Greg Pierce. On the work that you're doing for that part of the contract, are you guys using the bid, following the bidding procedures on all the stuff that you're contracting out?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
That's it.
Rockford Construction is a general contractor, so they're handling the bidding process. Some of the ones are actually in our cell, but we are going out.
But I mean, the stuff that you're doing before that starts.
Right.
Okay, that's the C, because that's what, that's what.
Rockford is handling part of those two forums.
Okay.
But we're still going through the bidding process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
I move that we adopt Resolution 814.
I'll second. Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Yes, I move to second to approve this amendment as a resolution. We need a roll call.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Item B is public hearing on the budget. Before we do that, perhaps Mark might want to get a little background update.
Yes. A recommended budget was presented through your April meeting. It represented priorities that you established through the strategic planning process. You've held a couple of workshops on it and some discussion in a previous council meeting. A copy of the recommended budget has been available at City Hall, Public Library, and on the City website as well. We have received, I want to say this, I have not received any inquiries or any comments on budget that's among you.
All right. At this point, we'll open up the public hearing, so if any citizen or others would like to speak to the budget, this would be the time to do that. And seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And we satisfy item B, and we'll move on to item C, the budget resolution. Concerns, first of all, on the part of the Council, they've had a couple of workshops. I think we're pretty good with most of it.
For all of it?
For all of it. Most of it. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt Resolution 914 to adopt the 2014-15 budget.
I will second.
I think we should probably just comment, the, looking at the Resolution 914, we probably wanted to say other matters related thereto. I don't think we wanted to say matters. Yeah, I could be wrong, but.
In the title.
Yes. Just clarifying, I think we want matters.
That's a norm.
I think we've moved ours with major, but I don't think that's what we want, mainly matters.
Does it say Amendment 2 or?
Yes.
Okay.
That's amended.
I kind of like mayors.
They should think.
Nonetheless, okay, we have a motion in the second, so it's a resolution. If I might call and assert for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Hall.
Yes.
Councilmember Althoff.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to D, contract bid for a Ford interceptor utility all-wheel-drive vehicle.
Now that you've adopted a budget, we would like to get the process going to replace the second of four police vehicles that we plan on replacing in the next four years. I attached to your packet, and I'll cover a couple of those things, but I attached to your packet the full description on this issue when it came to you last year, which really talked about the police interceptor and the all-wheel-drive vehicle. And Chief Guts and actually current Chief Buca had both done quite a bit of research on this change to the vehicles. And to kind of recap, the Chevy Impala is no longer available for us to purchase, or it's being phased off this year, I think. And so we decided that since we were going to go through this four-year vehicle replacement process, that we ought to just change over to the Fords and do that right now. As we looked at the all-wheel-drive version that we did purchase this year, there, you know, it has a lot of the same drive train, uses a lot of the same, you know, maintenance-type parts, I think the same tires, you know, that kind of stuff. But the other thing that was telling to me was mileage. I mean, that's the first thing that I looked at, is it's going to cost us more in gas. And really, there was a discernible difference between the two, when you're only getting about 13 to 15 miles in the gallon anyway. You know, that's about all we get on our police vehicles, just because of the stop-and-go and, you know, the nature of the vehicles. But really, wasn't a difference in the mileage that we get. The big thing, I think, on the plus side of these vehicles is that there is more room inside. And if you think about how police work has evolved over the last several years, and certainly over the last 10 years, and we have a wonderful veteran who's here with us who could attest to that, but it has become a mobile office. And, you know, it's not where you can take a normal vehicle and put a radio in it and put a couple of buttons in for the lights and the siren in your echo on a police vehicle. There are mounts for a host of other equipment, including the backtop computers that we have in them. So this really becomes a mobile office, and having just a little bit more room for the equipment and room for what I call the mobile office is really important for, not only for safety and comfort of the officers, but to wear and tear on the officers over the long haul. So we made the switch, and now we would like to purchase the second of the four vehicles that we plan on purchasing in the next four years. I will add that we did go to the Lowell area community fund, and we were rewarded, awarded a grant to pay for 75% of the cost of replacement in the first year, 57% the second year, 25% the third year, and then we'll be responsible for 100% of the cost in the fourth year. So that, in a nutshell, is a wrap-up of what I gave to you before. What we would like to do with your approval is begin the process of purchasing the next vehicle.
All right. Thank you. No other concerns on the Council part?
I guess no complaints about this vehicle. It's the one that everyone likes, and that's in the budget, now that we've had it for that amount of time.
From my perspective, it's a very nice vehicle. I mean, instead of stepping out of a car, we have to wear, we're stepping out of the vehicle. We're up higher, we can see more, I mean, ahead of us as far as traffic is concerned. There is more room. We carry a lot of equipment. Sedans we drive now are, the trunk is full of equipment, capable of spare tire back there. And then our floorboard next to us is more equipment, and we have to strap it all this and over our heads. So this vehicle accommodated all that stuff. Plus, it makes it safer for us, because we're bigger, we're more visible, and we can see more out around us.
Thank you. I move that we authorize the purchase of a Ford police interceptor utility vehicle with the equipment.
I will second.
And move to second to approve this purchase. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Any votes? I'm sure it wasn't a resolution. That's a roll call. And right on time, I say that Jim Saul is there for, we did add item D to the airport report, so Jim, if you're here to make your report.
Thank you. I'm, I should come these meetings more often, I didn't realize you worked 7:30. All right. All right. The reason I'm here, you know, I'm the airport manager, for those that don't know. And I have two jobs specifically there. One is to make sure that the airport at all times meets all the rules and regulations and statutes put on it by the Michigan Department of Transportation Aeronautics, M.Air, I'll be called. And the other one, obviously, is to report to the airport board if there's any issues that they should be concerned with regarding the safety around the airport and the plants around the airport. And that's my reason for being here tonight. As we all know, down there at the corner of Virginstown and Lake in Lake, they're putting in a gas station. J&amp;H Oil Company is putting in a gas station. And this gas station, it sits on land, that corner is about 38 feet higher than the Lowell Airport. And it begins, if you just think about that, an airplane leaving has to climb over, you know, what would be the land, and then you've got an airport on top of it now. And about two or three years ago, we spent between, well, we and the state of Michigan spent a great deal of money clearing the air easements down on that end of the airport to, you know, just make it a safer place and to get rid of trees. Extending out from every runway, and this is kind of like informational to give you a background on what's going on, you're not going to be asked to spend any money or anything. But extending out from the end of every runway, and we have three runways, two lanes on each, six places, but there's a slope that goes out from the runway at a 20-to-1 degree angle. For every 20 feet out, the bottom of the slope goes up a foot. 40 feet, it's up two feet. We're 1,200 feet from the airport, from that gas station, sorry. At 20 to 1, out there where the gas station is, the approach surface is 60 feet above the ground level of the airport at the end of the runway. 38 feet above is just ground. That leaves them 22 feet to put a building up. And so that's my concern. And we have been in communication, I have been in communication, with both the state and the Fed peoples, and the, I didn't do it, but somehow, they became aware that J&amp;H had not filed a particular form, 7460 they call it, that they are required to do before they can put up what's called a tall structure. How a gas station got under the rules of tall structures, I'm not sure, but they did. And the reason that the gas station has now stopped construction is under orders from the state of Michigan to stop. That order was issued last Thursday to be obeyed by noon. And they did stop Thursday afternoon, and there hasn't been anything going on. So that's in case you're interested in why they aren't working. It's not the result of anything that we've done at the airport yet. In the meantime, during this construction and the planning purposes, we had hoped that they would provide a little more input from the airport. We have a vital interest in what goes on. We have paid for the air easements at that place. And so we, today, I talked with Joe Grachowski, who is the engineer in charge from his company of the architecture, the planning, whatever, the building of this building. And we are setting up a meeting to get together and talk about the three main safety issues that the airport has with the construction of that gas station. The first one, of course, is obstructions up into the flight path. The other one is the lighting that's around there. At night, an airplane coming in to land has to go right over, and according to the paperwork that I have in my hand here, those lights are going to be a matter of just a few feet, like 10, 15 feet underneath the glide slope. I would say this to you, that the pucker factor would be a little high on a windy, wet, rainy night, coming in 10 feet over these light poles. And I want to discuss that with them, and how we might be able to evade them. The other issue that I have out there is fuel storage. I know nothing about what they have planned, other than there is no plans for above-surface propane tank storage out there. Now, I hear a lot of stories, and I don't want to play Chicken Little here, but I do feel that if there is something in the works, and it's, they would bring it up after everything is constructed and ask for an alteration to the Form 7460, that we should be ahead of the game on that a little bit. And so I also have on part of the Agenda to go to J&amp;H and say specifically, are you going to have any plans, and would you put it in writing? Because we don't want a propane tank sitting right there underneath an area where, if the airplanes are very close to the towers on the ground, the light towers and whatever, you hook an airplane to land on a propane tank, and then we got just a terrible problem. And so, in my thoughts, you know, it's like a river and a, opportunities like a river, I guess. River goes by and you lose it. This opportunity now, while J&amp;H is still in the very basic construction, they have the cement floor down of just what would be like the convenience center, and they have the, some sticks up. It's supposed to be a one-story building, and I'm not quite sure how it looks, but I got pictures of a two-story building going up there, a story and a half or whatever. It's way overall, one-story building, even a commercial. So this is a variation from the plans that they submitted to Virginstown Township for approval. So I have some issues and some questions that are happening there that I would like to just make sure that you know where we, as the airport board, are going. And, you know, we're not off hot cock trying to stop a gas station from being erected on that corner. We don't like to see a gas station erected on that corner. We bought all that property, the air easements over that property, to make it safe. And I have some pictures here that would make you wonder how safe that would be with a gas station right there. But that aside, if we don't want a gas station there, we have to buy the property, well, that's not going to be a very viable option either. So we have to live with what's going up, that Virginstown Township, you know, approved their plan. But we will be making a little stink if we feel that they're violating anything that we consider to be, you know, a real safety issue for the airport. So if anybody has any questions about what I said, I'd be happy to stand here all night.
We know that. But if you have any contact with the Virginstown Township officials, they're aware of everything also. I would say.
Very good. Thank you. Yep. I was going to go see Tim.
I talked to him today.
You talked to him today? Oh, very good. Good. I was not going to see him until after I had talked to you folks.
I just gave him a heads up.
Say it again?
I just gave him the heads up.
Okay. Well, then I will go see him, and I still would like him to know what our real concerns are. And, you know, we can't stop them from building a gas station. That's pretty simple. But we can make sure that they address all our safety issues so that, you know, five years from now, some widow with five kids shows up and wants to know why we didn't do something. And I would like us to know that we did indeed try to do something.
Very good. Any questions?
Any questions?
I'm just kind of surprised we got this far without having that all ironed out.
You know, like I said, I don't, we got the plans. We got the original site plan.
Well, that's what that is.
And that site plan, you know, can say anything. But to give you a very simple explanation, one of the things that I'm very concerned about is, I don't know where they, where they set the base of the approach slope. Now, if they use what's the official elevation of the airport, which is 682 feet above sea level, if they use the end of runway 12, which is the runway we're concerned about, that's only 672. So if they did that, and the airspace between the floor of the approach surface and the top of their highest light pole is 20 feet, they just lost 10 feet because they didn't measure it from the right place. These are things that I want to, you know, to be very careful with and to make very sure. I believe we'll get a satisfactory result. I believe that Joe Grachowski, former student of mine, therefore a very nice character person, you know, I don't think we'll have that much difficulty with it, but I just wanted you to be aware of what we are dealing with.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Yep.
Moving on then to item eight of the reports, the packet to be shared. Any questions or concerns about the reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. And Councilmember Althaus?
I only had one meeting, and that was the Exeter Airport meeting. And I did talk with Mark about it, and actually did want to, and learn about that we learned about the contract. And we are, we are, he is right, but does... Takes time to get it all straightened out. So, but at least it wasn't the other end of the, like, the other end of the airport or the physical airspace. So we did look out there. But that's all I have to say. Oh, I do have to say that I was up at the cemetery today to look how the project was coming, and it's looking, looking nice up there. And the sidewalks are due this year, going to the cemetery. So, and that's all I have to say tonight.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Schwab?
Fire Authority met this afternoon. Nothing to report back to that at that point, at least at this point. And that's all that I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
The Planning Commission discussed Mexico's something in the, some of the downtown area, and we're still looking at that. Lowell Area Recreation Authority had their first meeting, trying to build a Friends group. And former Chief Getson has taken on the responsibility, if you will, of leading that group. So I feel very good about what's happening there with the Friends of the Trails. Oh, in regards to Planning Commission, we are waiting for the Dollar Tree sign to be upgraded to what they agreed to in the beginning. So that's in the works. And that's all I have?
All right, thank you. This is Ellison.
The Arbor Board did meet, and we just discussed what our spring plannings would be in our budget, and we're still waiting for the BP station to be ready for the trees that we're going to dedicate there. So that's still in the works, but they're not quite ready yet. And I guess they are working on the Boy Scout cabin and completed the landscaping in front of that. I haven't seen it yet, but Mr. Hall said it looked very nice, and I know that was part of our tree plan. And that's the update from the Arbor Board, and I have nothing else.
Thank you. Lowell Light and Power did meet last week, and they, the minutes of their April 10th meeting, were in our packet for our various reports. And there was a lease agreement with Lowell Energy that we're aware of now, because we just passed it a few moments ago. And also, there was a great deal shared by Mr. Pierce in his report, and I will read from it liberally. Here that Annette Allen, the general manager of Grand Haven, has announced her retirement effective January 1st, 2015, from the Michigan Public Power Association as their chairperson. And Mr. Pierce was named to succeed her in January, so congratulations, Greg. And it's a very important position with the Michigan Public Power Association, so puts Lowell back in the spotlight some more and gives Greg a few extra things to do so. Anyway, he doesn't get too bored. The work is continuing on the Rolls-Royce turbine on the east side of the Light and Power Energy Center, as being ready for the biodigester construction. The solar combustion turbine was started for the first time this year on May 1st, and there was a visitation from the Kent County Career Tech Center back on May 6th to witness all of the activity over there and the combustion turbine operation. And Lowell Light and Power annual report has been sent out to all of us that pay those bills and so on. A very nice report. There's a lot of good reading in there, I mentioned that last time, but a little bigger version and very, very good. And strategic planning continued at their Light and Power Board meeting last Thursday as they prioritize their key strategies as they move forward. So things are going very well and very busy at Lowell Light and Power. The Chamber of Commerce also met last week and part in the fun. They had a healthy discussion on health insurance for their executive director. And then there was a downtown merchants meeting report. They're gearing up for the Riverwalk Festival, July 11 and 12, and the summer concerts begin on June 12. So, and then, of course, we have our very special Memorial Day in Lowell. And if I could read again from Mr. Thompson's press release briefly. On Monday, May 26, 2014, Oakwood Cemetery will host the rededication ceremony, which will be part of Lowell's traditional Memorial Day tribute to area veterans who have passed on since last Memorial Day. We are expecting an audience of about 1,000 people or better, and we hope that everyone will be with us for those celebrations. I'm very proud of what the folks do here in Lowell with that parade, because it's not a candy and fun-time parade. It's enjoyable to witness and be part of a tradition that's been longstanding. My grandmother used to refer to it as Decoration Day. And I'm very proud of what our community does in showing respect for those that invest. And thank you, Dave, and all your work for helping that happen. And with that, we'll move on to management report.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Vol Road is, as of that, as of this ready, was nearly complete. I didn't get a chance to drive it today, so I'm not sure if everything is done, maybe closed as well. Okay, but the other thing that we did is we worked with the striping contractor to have them do some paint striping on the other major streets that we're betting on doing this year. So kind of got a two-for-one there, working with that same contractor and getting, I'm sure, a reduced price. This last winter was perhaps the worst in at least 15 years, according to statistics that we keep. Dan does, as you know, does a great job of keeping records on certain things, and snow plowing is one of those. And it was my hope to throw a couple of graphs up on the screen tonight, but because of time limitations, I wasn't able to do that. But I will tell you that we had 116 inches of snowfall, and there were only two, three other times in the last 15 years that we've had over 100 inches of snowfall. And that was the most on record in the last 15 years. We used 360 tons of road salt. We have never, again, in the last 15 years, exceeded 300 tons. We've only exceeded 200 tons four times in the last 15 years. We had 627 hours of street plowing, and we've never exceeded 600 hours, and we've only exceeded 500 hours one time in the last 15 years. So it was a, it was a record winter. And we made through it. And thanks to Dan, thanks to his crew for the hard work that they did this, this winter in keeping the streets clear. And thanks also to the police department, because the snow flies, that doesn't make their job any easier either, so. I handed my written report to Civil War Memorial, but it seems like that's been sufficiently discussed tonight, other than I would like to add my two cents in terms of thanking the American Legion and thanking Dave Thompson for his work on this project. It really is going to be a wonderful asset to Lowell Cemetery, a wonderful asset to this community. I can't wait to see the cannon, can't wait to see that installed. And I can't wait for the parade either. And I might even bring a little candy anyway, just for myself. Wonderful job, wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you for taking on the project, and thank you for everything that the Legion does for this community. And finally, regarding the Light and Power Truck and Home Meetings issue, you were given a report from City Training to one of the May 5 council meeting. Since that time, we've been giving, giving some additional information, which we're reviewing, and we'll report back to you once we've completed our review. But just want you to know that that is ongoing. I just wanted to pull it back to you on that. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Moving on then to appointments. There are no appointments currently pending. All the boards are full. I'm cheering up the council some re-appointments that we're looking to maybe do at our next meeting. And with that...
The closed session.
I was going to mention that too. No, I have no update, and there's really nothing to discuss, so.
And that case time will be adjourned at 7:42.
I will second.
We've moved to second to adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.